Property. At 109 South Dogwood Road, Clinton, to be rezoned from an RS, R1 S to C1 District. Is there any public comments from the audience for or against this rezoning? Is there any comments from the commission?
This has been approved by the planning commission?
Yes.
C1.
To C1 District. It's the corner of Dogwood and Edgemore, right across Dogwood from the Bread Basket.
Bread Box.
Bread Box.
Has it been posted, or has the neighbors been notified, or what's the process over there?
Mr. White, from, I recall from years been on the planning commission, they are to post signs on the property to be rezoned prior to the public hearing and prior to the meeting of the planning commission. I'm assuming that was done.
Are there any way to find out for sure if it's been done? And the reason I'm asking, we're having a situation in the Norwood area where a piece of property was not posted, and I really think we need some kind of a policy to make that very clear, to where that each time a property is going to be rezoned, it should be posted, to where that each and every neighbor that passes by would be notified.
That's part of our zoning regulations, as I recall from serving on the planning commission.
Are there anyone that can answer that?
There is. The zoning office. In fact, I had asked the mayor to have the zoning officer present at this public hearing, and...
Are they here?
No. The... And I'd like to see that this year, as I am vice chairman to hold these public hearings, is to have someone here to explain the rezoning as we've used to in the past. If you recall in the past, we had the zoning officer to present this zoning request to us, and then they would relay the comments of the planning commission and from the neighbors that may have called in about the rezoning when they read the sign.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask that be part of the minutes that we have an answer to this, to see if it's been posted, or to see what the policy of posting a piece of property is? Could I include that in the minutes to where that we could each get a copy to confirm whether it was or whether it wasn't?
Well, we can bring that up in the commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Please come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is David Kusick. I live at 483 Monmouth Road, and I have a comment that's more related to what you just talked about, not in this particular piece of property, but it relates to what Commissioner White had said about another piece of property, and it's in regards to notification. So if you would give me a moment, I'd like to talk a little bit about that.
The commission willing to give him the opportunity to speak? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Article 4, Administration Enforcement and Zoning Board Appeals, Division 70 Administration Enforcement, Section 070100, Administration of the Resolution, within that states, "In their interpretation and application, the provisions of this resolution shall be considered minimum requirements adopted for promotion of public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and general welfare of the community." Now, this is me speaking here. To be able to adequately speak, to adequately meet the standard put forth here, that is, the welfare of the public and those in our community, notification to those individuals living in the community who would be impacted by decisions reached by the zoning board of administration in regards to special exceptions and variances. That public notification must be adequate to abutting and adjoining property owners, meaning those public stakeholders who have the most immediate and greatest interest in any special exception or variance. Moving to Section 075-050, Procedures for Authorizing Special Exceptions Under A Applications, an application shall be filed with the zoning board of appeals for review. Said application shall show the locations of intended uses of the site, the names of property owners of existing and existing land uses within 1,000 feet, maps documentation required by other relevant provisions of this resolution, and any other information deemed necessary and proper by the board. So here you have the regulation requiring the petitioner to bring to the zoning board of administration the names of all those affected within 1,000 feet. Yet the irony of this is that while those on the board have been notified about, by the petitioner, those with the highest level of interest have been excluded from this type of notification, meaning abutting property owners, abutters of abutters, et cetera. Notification as it stands now in Anderson County requires one notice be posted one week prior to the zoning board meeting. This notice is put in the Courier-News. This is inadequate by any measure. The Courier-News's circulation is approximately 3,500, and it's put out once per week. The 2010 census information for Anderson County, total population 18 and above is approximately 59,000 people, meaning that the Courier-News reaches approximately 6% of total 18 and above population. And by total household numbers within Anderson County, it reaches only 11%, meaning that at best approximately nine out of 10 people within the county receive no notification. They're completely unaware. The zoning rate, these zoning regulations were adopted in 1977. Things have changed greatly in 41 years. So much is done electronically now, yet even the Courier-News doesn't have, doesn't update their own webpage with public notifications. You can't even go there and find it, making it that much more difficult for interested parties in our community to be properly informed. Many years ago, I was on the zoning board of adjustment in the town that I lived in prior. The requirements there were if you came before us, you had to notify abutting properties, and you had to notify abutters of abutters, and this notification had to be done by mail. It wasn't done with the one-time posting in the newspaper with the circulation that nine out of 10 people didn't see. So I would ask that you would be consider to update, improve public notification so as to better serve those in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the information. It's very valuable. If there's no more comments, I'll close the public hearing.
Come back in six minutes.
29 years of various military service. And I think, and I know I meant to... And you realize when you go into any... Two minutes. I guess they have to do something. Girls, what they're here for, and not only the gym anymore. Oh. Four and trustee minutes. I don't know. I'd say that's why they're about the insurance, I'm sure, because, man, everybody's busted about counties' insurance. I'm sorry. I don't know that that's what they're here for.
Everybody came.
Yes. Yeah, you're pretty much right, unless you make a motion to move it. Thing is, sometimes there's things that are kind of mentioned, that you just pick up in the regular gym. Yeah, yeah. A lot of times, it's tough for the... To me, one of the most important things in dreams.
We're going to call the Anderson County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order, Monday, September 17, 2018. Will be led in prayer by Commissioner Fritz. We'll also be having our allegiance by Commissioner Mead, but before we do that, could everyone please go check in your attendance on the roll call? Thank you. Before we go to prayer, let's all rise. Commissioner Fritz, I'd like to say a few words. Many of you may have heard, our mayor may not be here tonight. She's had a death in the family. I'd like for us to take a moment of silence in honor of her, her family. Her aunt, Eileen Slater, has passed, and I just want her to know, on behalf of this board, that our thoughts and prayers are with her. So Commissioner Fritz, if you don't mind, let's go have a moment of silence in her honor and her aunt's honor and the family, and then please pick up the prayer and go to our allegiance. Let this time have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Most kind of gracious, Father. Just thank you, Father, for this day, and any blessings you can give us. And Lord, at this time, we just ask you to just be with all the families that have been in the way of this storm, Father, and has suffered damage and loss in their lives, and has been hurt in so many different ways, Father, and that you just be with all the families throughout this country, Lord, that's been devastated, Lord. Just be with them and help them, Father, in ways that you know how. And Father, we just ask you to be with us tonight, Lord. Help us, Father, to do what is right for this county, Father. Help us to do what is best for you and this kingdom. Forgive us when we fail in so many ways. Please, would you stay with us?
Amen.
Ask you all to join me in the pledge to the flag. Hand salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Next on the agenda is appearance of citizens. Do we have any citizens that would like to speak tonight on anything that's not on the agenda? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Ron Young. I'm interim on the Anderson County Community Action Committee, and I'm here asking help to resolve a budget crisis. I have... This has been going on for four years that we were not aware of. I'm a new member. I've just been there 10 months, so I got hit with a lot of stuff. I had no idea what I was getting into. Unpaid payroll taxes going back to 2014. The city has indicated that they will try to make, come up and pay half if I can get this body to go with the other half. And I also have a hint about... ...the ramifications of what happens if you don't. We can't just simply declare ourselves out of business and shut the doors. There's a big process we have to go through, and this was furnished to me by DHS, and it would take four to six months to be able to do that. And then it would take another 10 to 12 months to bring another body in to take up the grant that, grants that they get. If you have any questions, I'll trot my best answer. I've got my associate, Kathy Stansberry, here, who's been on it longer than I have.
Mr. Chairman, this needs to come to the budget meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner White. I tend to agree. Is that a form of motion, sir?
I'd like to make this a motion if Mr. Young brings this to the budget committee.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Commissioner Denenberg, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Could you clear the board so we can get everybody to use the system? Thank you, Brian. I think I seen Commissioner Meredith have his hand up until we get the board cleared. Commissioner Meredith, and I'll catch you guys next. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron, is there any deadlines associated with this?
As soon as possible. There's a grant pending that is due to be put out October 1st.
Okay.
And I know that's not doable. She, the person whose name you said is ahead of that knows it's not possible. I told her I'd try to get it out by the middle of October.
Well, I think the last thing that I would want to do is ruin the opportunity to dissolve the community action commission, so that's why I was asking that question. So there's not any, I'm sure there's penalties, and you're saying the city of Clinton is willing to pay half?
According to Scott, he said he would introduce it.
Okay. Well, if there's not a delay, I think the motion's proper unless there's a deadline that we need to meet. October 1st is going to be impossible, just about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. I think it was Commissioner McCamey, sir.
My question was, $31,156 is what you're asking for, or half of that?
Half of that. It was $38,000, something, some odd cents, and our CPA has negotiated down with the IRS to the figures that it's on here.
But it's written on here, payroll taxes have been paid through August 2018?
Yeah, for this year.
For this year.
We are current on this year.
Okay.
But there's 2017, 16, 15, and a few from 2014.
Okay, what does your budget look like for the coming year? Are you going to be able to handle it?
That depends on what happens.
From here on out, or I mean, or is this going to be something, is this going to be a recurring thing?
I had a deal worked out that fell through a week ago, what, Saturday? That we were going to put ourselves under Ethera and still have a board, but we were going to let them have day-to-day operations because Susan has attended her resignation effective the end of this month, and Ethera was willing to help us. But when they saw how much the IRS indebtedness was, they kind of shied away. I did not realize that till Monday morning, a week ago today.
But if that amount were paid, would Ethera then consider taking it over?
Ethera would still be willing to take it, as far as I know. I haven't heard otherwise. And I'd hate to see a lot of needy people that depend on it.
It's a good program, there's no doubt about that, but, you know, we've, in the past, we've donated quite a bit to community action.
I understand.
In fact, we've paid for several years.
Clinton hasn't donated in 10 years, and, you know, we went through a budget crisis everybody is aware of, 2008, 2007, that communities just quit giving because they didn't have the money to give. And now that we're paying the price.
Mr. Chairman, was this a referral motion or... I know we're discussing it, then, on a deferral motion.
Commissioner White made a motion to, I believe, refer it to Budget Committee, and then he had a second by Commissioner Denenberg. Is that still the intent of the motion?
That is my intent, but whatever this board wants.
Yes, sir. When's the next budget meeting?
The first Thursday of October.
Well, it doesn't sound like, I mean, obviously, it's a pressing need. We don't want to make it seem like we don't have interest.
Right, I know there's protocol, and I know this is coming at you unforeseen, but...
Is this something you can let us go through the budget process?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other further discussion? Did I miss anybody? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries the forward to the Budget Committee.
Thank you very much, and I'll notify Michelle that you referred it to the proper...
Thank you for what you do, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Any other citizens, parents of citizens? Please state your name, your address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Heatherly. I live at 668 Miller Road in Clinton, Tennessee. I'm senior vice president of Merritt Construction Company, and I am the chairman of the Legislative Committee for the Anderson County Chamber. With me tonight is Stephanie Struthers, with anything you want to know about drugs but we're afraid to ask, no, you're, it's really ASAP, and David Urb, also on our Legislative Committee. I hope you have one of these before you tonight. I want to spend just a few minutes chatting about those. Everybody got one of these?
Yes, sir.
What you have before you as our legislative agenda from last year, your chamber leads the collaborative effort with our friends from Scott County, Claiborne County, Morgan County, Union County, and Campbell County to develop this legislative agenda and action list every year. It's good to see our old friends here. We've come here every year for the past several years. It's good to see the new faces as well. Congratulations on your successful campaigns. Once this document is developed, we meet with the appropriate legislators and present it to them. We monitor it during legislative session, and we meet them at the conclusion of the session for legislative wrap-up. We have been successful in the past on a number of items that affect our county. We are in the initial phases of development of this year's legislative agenda. We are here tonight to simply ask for your help in the development of this agenda. If you are aware of any item that would be appropriate for us to include in our legislative agenda for this coming year, it would be very helpful that you made us aware of it through me, Rick, or our first legislative planning session is October 1st at 8:00 a.m. at the JA Building. We would love to see you there as well. That's really it. If you got any easy questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If you have any hard questions, I'm going to defer to the folks behind me.
Mr. Heatherly, we appreciate you coming to the commission and all you do. I see a lot of great things on here. One that piques my interest is increased support, funding for the state's road program, industrial access, and there's many good things. Education, as you already mentioned, drug abuse prevention, and of course, tourism.
Sure.
That's a major part.
All very important issues that affect our county every day.
Could you, if there's no questions on this issue, could you touch on Commissioner Meredith and the award he just won not too long ago?
We knew when we hired Rick that he was going to be good.
And let's let him know this was not planned, okay?
No. We knew when we hired Rick that he was going to be good. We just didn't realize he was going to be that good. So we're very proud of Rick and his, and his award. As you may know, he was selected out of all of the chambers across the state, including all the big boys. So we're really proud of Rick. He's probably got the big head because we've told him that so much here lately, but we are, and we appreciate the good job that you have done and that you will continue to do.
Congratulations.
Very well deserved. Any other comments?
Any questions?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you for bringing it to us. Thank you for your time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One thing, we, one of the programs that we are bringing, actually, and we've been talking about doing this for quite a long time, at least for the last two years, but on Wednesday night at the Anderson County Civic, or not Anderson County Civic, Anderson County High School Auditorium, we're going to have an active shooter seminar, educational seminar that, and the name is escaping me for the individual that's doing it, Scott Lane from Knox, from TBI, Payne, Scott Payne from TBI, so from the FBI. Stand corrected, thank you very much. That was it.
They're both important. Thank you.
This Wednesday, 6 o'clock, Anderson County High School Auditorium.
Is that open to anyone that wants to come? Oh, very good, very good, very good. Any other questions, comments? Thank the Anderson County Chamber for what you do. You make our county a better place to live, no question about it. Thank you. Any other citizens? Any other citizens that would like to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda? Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Etta Giles, and I live at three-nine-six Mahoney Road, Oliver Springs. At last month's commission meeting, my husband talked to you a little bit about notification of zoning variances, how the communities are notified about a zoning variance. I'd like to add a little bit to what he said, though, and I'd like for you to understand that a zoning variance is a very powerful tool. It's almost as powerful as a rezoning, but yet there's very little notification given at all as to that coming up. Rezoning has it posted on the property for a certain length of time, and the community can see those postings. With a zoning variance, all you get is one notice in the Clinton Courier a week before the zoning committee meets. And actually, it turns out to be six days. That's just not enough time, and it's not enough notification, just one notification in the Clinton Courier. It's not enough notification to allow a community to get together and do what they need to do, hire a lawyer, get a petition, or whatever they need to do to affect something that's going to affect that community the way a zoning variance does. It can change a community forever because a zoning variance continues with that piece of property even after it's sold. There's a lot of things that go into all that, but the one thing that is so important is that it can change the character of a community, and it has changed the character of our community, and that's why we're so concerned with it. There needs to be some way of notifying the people in that community more than six days before a zoning meeting about what's going to take place in their community. Give them a chance. The people that are bringing the variance application to the zoning board, they get all the time in the world. You know, they've got all the time coming up to the application process, from the application process through the agenda, from the agenda on through the meeting. But the people in the community don't get that. They get six days, and that's all, if they happen to notice it because the only notification is the Clinton Courier. I just urge you, please, for the sake of our communities, do something that will allow us as citizens to have an opportunity to have input and to get things together as a community. It takes time to do that in a community. You can't do it in six days, and I just urge you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Our board working, Brian? Did anybody have any questions? Has anybody tried to use the board? Okay. Oh, sorry. I see it now. Commissioner Smallridge?
Yes, could we ask that this issue be looked at and maybe reported back to the commission or whatever committee it needs to be looked at by?
I see County Attorney Mr. Jaeger coming to the mic.
If you would like, I'll go ahead and draft a vision for amendment to the zoning resolution and take it for Planning Commission. Remember, those have to go to both Regional Planning Commissions, the City of Clinton and Anderson County, so we can start that process. I'll draft something, send it to you, see what, if anybody's got any modifications to it. At that point, we'll put it in the hopper for our Planning Commission, the City of Clinton. But I can go ahead and make those adjustments.
Thank you.
Mr. Jaeger, question, would that include the BZA as well?
Yes, sir. I'd like to include any special exception, any variance, and all rezonings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you very much. Jay, how do we go about discussing reversing something that has taken place? And I'm asking in particular to what the Giles has brought up. They've got a piece of property that was zoned within that week, and they're stating that 55 residents don't want this. They've asked for assistance from the county already, and they're in Oliver Springs. They're not in the City of Clinton, but they're in Oliver Springs. How would they go about getting that put back to being a residence or residential area?
That's very difficult at this point, and I can explain to you in great detail about that. But we've issued permits prior to this for this individual to have the zoning department issue permits. They actually signed off on a form that said it had the proper zoning and proper use. That individual, this was on his building permit, is allowed to rely upon that, okay? If we go back now and we reverse that, he's got damages, okay? He's got damages against the county that are recoverable in a lawsuit. The Board of, the BZA Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, has granted him a special exception. They are willing to establish findings of fact, I'm writing those form right now, and community safeguards. Those community safeguards will address the traffic, the noise, and several other issues. We'd also like, I've talked to Chairman White, to put together a three-member community board where complaints can be taken about this. The guy's wanting to work with us, that owns it right now. He's limited right now to a wedding chapel. That's what we approved. The zoning department did some time ago, over a year ago.
Okay.
He expanded that on his own accord without approval from the BZA to include concerts, Jeep roundup, sales, antique type sales. That was never allowed. All that was permitted downstairs was simply a wedding chapel.
Okay.
They've addressed this last month or this month. We'll come back next month. While I present these community safeguards, I've asked the neighbors to please contact me if they've got any ideas. Got a couple of great people down there that know what they're doing. Mr. Cusack, as he mentioned, he served on a BZA before. He's willing to help, and we'll put together a list of community safeguards that will hopefully soften the blow to this community and take care of some of the major issues they have. The fire safety, the alcohol, the traffic, the noise, things like that. We'll address them all. And that's the best I can do as far as right now. I'll give you an update next month after the next BZA meeting.
Sure. I appreciate that very much. I mean, they did send out letters to some of the commissioners.
Yes, a bunch of fine, fine folks down there.
And simply had some questions and points that they wanted to address.
I'll be glad to talk to you more in detail about it.
I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on that issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Next item on the agenda, any other folks need to approach the commission on any issues? Approval or in correction of agendas? We have the consent agenda. Everything good with the consent agenda? Need to pull anything? Have a motion approved. Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, yes, wait a minute.
I see the Law Director's report is listed on the consent agenda, but aren't there items that have to be brought up during the meeting?
It's on both.
It's on both, okay. Okay. So the Law Director's report is on both. Great, thanks.
Annette, please scratch that motion. I'm going to try to use this board to the best of my ability, and we had a motion by Commissioner Scott, and I neglected to see that. So Commissioner Scott, was that your motion? Or no, you pulled it away? It disappeared again? Well, I definitely want to use the board. We have the board to use, and I apologize. There was a motion made and seconded, and then a motion popped up. So I guess we'll stay with the original motion by Commissioner McCamey and seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any other discussion on the consent agenda as presented? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the regular agenda. Any... Yes, sir, Commissioner Fritz.
To add under the, to the agenda, the 2018 Blockhouse Valley Deer Hunt. And I'd like to add it maybe to 8A.
We have a letter that was handed out by Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Fritz, he'll get into this later, but is now the Chairman of the Conservation Board. He would like to add the item under 8A for deer hunting at the Blockhouse Valley area. Do I have a second? Any further discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Any other items on the regular agenda that needs to be addressed or adjusted? Do I have a motion approved? Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointment of parliamentarian. I'd like to announce, I'd like to thank those of you who I spoke with, and I'd like to announce Commissioner Phil Jaeger as the parliamentarian to serve for our board going forward in 2018, 2019. So Commissioner Jaeger, will you come over here and assume your position and bring all your wisdom with you and books and be prepared to be the parliamentarian? I'd like to thank Commissioner McCamey for what he did. And of course, Commissioner Isabel again for your leadership as chairman. Appreciate you. I've got to lose weight up here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. You get your nameplate, too. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public hearing report by Vice Chairman Creasy. Mr. Creasy?
Thank you, Chairman White. At 6:15, we had a public hearing on the rezoning by recommendation by the Planning Commission on the property located at the intersection of Edgemore Road and South Dogwood Road. Anderson County tax map 96, partial 16, 1.4 acres. There was no positive or negative comments regarding this proposal to rezone. Therefore, make the motion that we rezone this property from R1S to general commercial C1.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I have a concern that we were, there was no one here to present it, and there was no one here that was able to confirm that appropriate notifications had been made. I believe what we really should be doing is deferring this to next month after that can be, after that can be confirmed. Because of appropriate notifications before this is reconsidered, I think doing it next month is really the most appropriate means. I don't see where there's any big rush on it unless there's something that I'm just not unaware of. But I'm concerned that we were, there was no one here that could even tell us that, yes, the appropriate signs had been posted at all, let alone where they posted the appropriate times. I think this is just, to do otherwise would be basically ignoring some of the complaints we heard by other people this evening.
Very well said, Commissioner Mead. This body did approve this in October of 2017. For whatever reason, it didn't get annotated in the minutes properly. So those individuals were here back then, but I still agree with your comment. So what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second, so we would need to withdraw that motion and the second if we're going to take different action. Mr. Chairman, what's your pleasure?
If it's a feeling of the commission, I'd willingly withdraw it. I agree that we need someone here from the planning office that attends the planning meetings that can tell us what has happened. And I think Commissioner White agrees with that as well. If the rest of the commissioners are in agreement, I'll withdraw my motion. Is there any objections to that? I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdrawal motion has been made, it's been seconded. Any discussion on that withdrawal motion?
One question.
Commissioner McCamey?
Will we have to have another public hearing? Or do we just defer this for 30 days till somebody comes and says that it... I mean, it says legal notice of public hearing, published in compliance with TCA 13 days, seven days, 105.
I think we, I mean, I'm certainly not an attorney, but I think we would have to have another meeting. We had one back in October. We've had one now, and I think we would have to have another one kind of to address the folks that have already talked as well. Commissioner, or Law Director Jaeger?
Is this one on, Brian? We're not required to have another public hearing, but it may be proper in this case since there was no one here to answer any questions. The commissioners had... It's a simple process. We've actually had this on the agenda before, but we failed to take a vote for some reason. It got on the consent agenda a year or so back. But there's no problem with having another public hearing. That'll allow the county commissioners to ask questions of the building commissioner or the staff at that time. But there's no requirement to have a public hearing the night of the vote, just that we have a public hearing on the issue.
And Jay, are we, we're not really required to take any action after the public hearing? For instance, tonight, I mean, we could just defer for 30 days?
Yes, but we got to make sure there's notice the next month, a separate notice than just the county commission agenda, and I'm sure Annette will be able to take care of that.
All right, thank you. You okay with that process? Thank you. Commissioner Mead?
I make the motion to delay for 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion to delay on the public...
Defer, I think, is probably the proper word. Defer for 30 days.
Have a motion to defer. We have a second. I don't think there's any discussion on a deferral motion.
Or perhaps I should say till the next meeting. It might not be exactly 30 days.
Okay. I have a motion to delay or defer to the next meeting. We have a second. I don't think there's any discussion on the deferral motion. Is that correct, Mr. Parliamentarian?
It is debatable, sir.
It is debatable. So any discussion? No one wants to debate, so we're fine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything else on the public hearing?
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Next item, purchasing report. Catherine Ajmeri, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? The first items on the agenda under contracts approved by the Law Director, we have three contracts with Johnson Controls. Would you like to approve them as a group or individually?
Have a motion to prove as a group? We have a second. Commissioner White, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Under Section B, we have two contracts that are pending Law Director approval, and I'd like to take these separately because I have a note on the second one. So the first item is a contract with Comcast Business for Rocky Top Library submitting for your approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner White.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, also pending Law Director approval, is with Metro Communications. It's a contract for radio maintenance, and I wanted to note that this is also still pending the Sheriff's Department approval because they may, it's based on a bid that was scoped out by the previous administration, and I think we're going to decrease the amount of services and the length of the contract, but submitting for your approval. We can. I did speak with, gosh, the new gentleman over there, Tyler Mays, and he said if you all wanted to go ahead and approve, then they could approve it at most five years as it's written, but then they, I mean, they would still have to approve it anyways.
Hi, I'm Tyler Mays.
Sir, could you state your name and your title?
Yeah, on this Metro contract, it was something that the previous administration had worked out. Okay, I'm sorry.
Let me hang on, Commissioner Scott. For everyone that may not know, I think most of the people in county understand that we have our sheriff in front of us. Mr. Barker, Sheriff Barker, we appreciate you being here, and please, sir, microphone.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to all you guys for your win. That never gets old hearing that. I did have a guy today apologize to me that I lost to that Baker guy. It's all right. It don't always bounce your way. But this Metro contract... But this, this Metro contract, it was something the previous administration had worked out. And it was a five-year deal, $41,000 a year. But as we got to looking at it and taking a, it was, first of all, it was something kind of caused by surprise, we weren't aware of it. But once we got to taking a look at it, about 80% of our radios are going to be obsolete as of December, I believe it was, is that correct? So we were going to be locked into a five-year deal for $41,000 a year when our radios, 80% of radios wouldn't even be serviceable. So it just doesn't make any sense to spend that money. So we asked for the 30 days and we're taking a look at it to see what better fits our needs. One of the things that we have looked at is reducing it to somewhere in the neighborhood of $17,000.
Excellent Sheriff.
On that. Is she still up?
Yeah, oh yeah, you're fine. Commissioner Fritz, you still would like to make that motion?
To defer for 30 days?
Please.
To defer for 30 days.
We have a motion to defer. Who seconded? Commissioner Jameson, thank you, sir. Any discussion on the referral for 30 days for this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you Catherine.
The next item submitting for your approval under sections C, other business is a request of surplus personal property.
Have a motion Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion under surplus property? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And one last item submitting for your approval under new business is a contract amendment that changes the name of the vendor that provides the schools with website hosting. And this one has been approved by the law director.
Have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner White. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Catherine. Next is our budget committee report by Finance Director Natalie, or Natalie, floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me get set up here.
While you're getting set up, Teresa, Commissioner Scott, what page are we on? Thank you, I'm trying to catch up and you guys are doing such a good job, I'm falling behind on my job. Thank you. When you're ready, Ms. Herb.
Okay, very good. So as usual, I have the cash and fund balance report to present. Before I get started, I will say we are two months into this fiscal year. Over the next three to four months, the cash and fund balance will decline until property taxes are collected this fall. I'd also like to emphasize that for last fiscal year, we're still unaudited. So the numbers that we're talking about that as far as reserve balances are still unaudited. But we have closed the books for last fiscal year. So for the general fund, you will note that unassigned fund balance is over $5 million. That is favorable and it's above that $4 million threshold. Also, as it relates to the general fund, like I said, the total fund balance is above this time last year. That's a favorable indicator. Also, cash is above this time last year, which is also favorable. It's around 2.1 million ahead of this time last year and 2.2 million ahead of two years ago. In closing the fiscal year, I would like to draw your attention to the ambulance fund 118. And the total fund balance you will see is a negative $110,000. EMS has a negative fund balance, which is in essence a deficit as of last fiscal year. The reason for that predominantly is the reporting requirements around moving it from a 205 enterprise fund into a 118 special, special revenue fund. So I believe on the next slide or in your packet, the next material, I'd like to walk you through a summary financial statement as of last fiscal year. And again, this is unaudited. So if you look at the total revenue, which that, which is that first bold line, you will see that the total revenue for EMS was 2.1 million dollars, which is favorable to the budget revenue of $6 million. If you go down to the total expenditure line, you will see actual expenditures of 6.2 million dollars and a budgeted estimate of $6 million. So right there, you can see that the actual expenditures well exceeded the budget. And if you look one line up, it says transfers out, $450,000. What this is made of is predominantly two different factors. One is, as you'll recall, we had to go out and basically do operating transfers into the self-insurance fund three different times throughout the year. The impact on the ambulance fund was a total of $45,000. So $45,000 was transferred out of the EMS fund to assist with the funding issue in the self-insurance fund. Hopefully that's familiar with a good many of you. The remainder of the 450, which is $405,000, is attributable to, again, the financial reporting differences in those two different funds. And what that means is, as an enterprise fund, the financials have to look at short-term and long-term assets and liabilities. And moving it into a self, or a special revenue fund, a 118 fund, you're not looking, we're not bringing into that fund the long-term assets and liabilities. So what that means is the capital assets and their respective depreciation goes to countywide. And then the other post-employment, other post-employment benefits, which is a liability, that's now reported countywide. It's not reported for that fund because those are long-term assets, long-term liabilities. So, I'm going to pause here in a second. Basically, as a 118 fund, their financials are only reporting on short-term assets, short-term liabilities. And in making that financial reporting change, that is what's driving this fund operating really at a fund balance deficit as of the end of last fiscal year. So let me pause, what questions can I answer? It's complicated, so.
Well, sounds like you got your arms around it. Any questions from the commission? I see none, so please continue.
Okay, very good. Well, that's what I have for you on the cash and fund balance report, if there aren't any other questions. Sure.
Yes, Commissioner Jameson.
Will this balance out later on or will we have a deficit the entire year?
So.
Or is there any way of knowing?
Right, so fund balance is an ongoing, basically accumulated, reserve balance for that fund. So this deficit will continue until there is sufficient funding to cover its expenses. Or if you kept revenues the same and decreased expenditures, then that would start to, to build that fund balance back up. Financially, those are the only two levers, to increase revenue, decrease expenses. Okay? Very good. So moving on to the summary of budget amendments. Submitting for your approval individually or as a group. Group two appropriations, school. And because this is an appropriation, if we could have a board vote, please.
Please, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Let's go to the board and take a vote. 16 yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to group three, submitting for your approval individually or as a group. This all, also requires board vote. It's transfers on behalf of schools affecting major line items and/or payroll.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Commissioner Small, Small Ridge, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. One moment, he's got to clear it. This is for group three, transfer schools.
Yes.
16 yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to group four appropriations, non-school. Again, this requires a board vote, submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
We have a motion to approve as a group, group four. Do we have, we have a second? Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner White. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Group five, submitting for your approval individually or as a group. These are transfers, non-school, also requiring board vote, please.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Scott, any discussion? We have a question here from Commissioner Jaeger.
If the sheriff is still out there, I was in budget and heard his description of what this was about. If he would come back and, and. And explain your, your internal changes.
Okay, yeah, what we're, what we're looking to do is, one, it's these positions that we've come up with, it's fulfilling our campaign promises. And it's the vision that we have for our sheriff's department. We are super excited about the opportunity to not just work with you guys, but with every department in the community, or in the, in county government and throughout the community. So that, for example, you take the Director of Community Relations. This is all going to fall in under things such as our senior safe program, which we're working on to get it started. Through other events that we're going to have, what we want to do is engage the community and really bridge that gap between all of our citizens and the sheriff's department to get in community involvement. We believe that as long as we're doing that, that one, we're going to get more information out to them as what we're doing to be a little more transparent. And in addition to that, we're going to be getting as a benefit, crime tips and finding out what's really going on. We're going to also lean towards community or front porch policing, however you prefer to, to refer to that as. And, and so Director McBroom will be part of, a big part of that. He'll be working closely with our crime analyst and also with all the groups that we have. And as far as the Director of Administrative Services, budgets and grants, one of the things that we had talked about on the campaign trail as well, with the, the funding you guys have given us, which is tremendous in my, in my account. I believe, as I've said a thousand times, we need to get away from the deputy that is best at math and get to somebody who has some, a background in county government and/or budget and also in grants. So we were looking for something very specific in the sense, somebody who has this combination and has technical writing skills. Because one of the things that we are absolutely lagging behind is grants. That is tax money we've already paid out, so I say we bring it back to Anderson County. One of the things that we just learned about down at the, I just finished up the second week of our new sheriff's school. OCJP is a group out of, out of Nashville that provides grants, federal grants that are, that are executed through the state. The Seventh Judicial Crime Task Force, we operate on one every year. We just learned that we can actually purchase patrol cars through those grants as well. And of course, I'm sure some of the conversations you guys have had, you know that that's one of the issues we're currently having is our fleet management. So now, what that grant money looks like, it could be one or, or who knows how many. But that is something we're definitely going to pursue to help offset the cost for what we're doing. And we're super excited about it.
Thank you Sheriff. Answer your question.
Exactly, I just wanted to tell everyone on TV and so now everybody, everybody knows.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, if it doesn't, and Sheriff, you've obviously explained it, I'd like to just read the justification if I could for those at home. It's a decreation of cop, so you're going to decrease the compensation codes in the jail to fund two new positions on behalf of, obviously, the sheriff's department. The two positions are for the Director of Administrative Services and the Director of Community Relations, which you just spoke about. So that, that kind of clears it up. So you're really just reallocating funds within the budget.
That's right.
Yeah, it's part, part of a reorganization. And we believe that they're going to be crucial in our success moving forward. One of the benefits, this is going into our third week, that we had a four-day weekend due to the holiday. And then, of course, I was gone the second week. But one of the things that we've already accomplished through this reorganization is we've already put two extra bodies on the road. Another thing that we heard was that there was a shortage. Commissioner Waddell, Waddell could tell us about that as well, that we have approximately six people on the road. So we threw some looking and trying to figure out what we could do to get the most bang for our buck. Chief Galloway come up with a heck of an idea called a mid-shift, where we've got two people. So two days a week, we're actually going to have up to eight during the busy times. And then the rest of the time, with the exception of Sunday, we're going to have a seventh car. And that is all a direct result of this reorganization.
Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know we got locked in here for the board vote, I don't want to miss anybody. Alright, so we have the vote, and this is for the whole group, correct?
Correct.
Natalie, any other questions before we move on? Please go to the board and vote. Motion passes 16 yes, zero no. Thank you Natalie.
Thank you. So moving to group six appropriations affecting the general fund, unassigned fund balance. There are two submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go to the board. This does require a board vote?
Yes, please.
Yes, let's go to the board and place your vote. This is group six appropriations, general fund. 16 yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one new piece of business, it was, it's under group eight. I prepared a letter that I included in the materials that went out in your package. On behalf of the EMS fund, in order for them to proceed with the purchase of 10 cardiac monitors and take advantage of a discount, Capital Projects Fund 171 needs to essentially borrow the cash through an inter-fund loan. That money would be repaid to the general fund when the tax levy is received. In order to take advantage of that discount, it requires commission's approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any further discussion on this item? Group eight, item 19, requests for an inter-fund loan of $265,990.
And board vote, please.
Let's go to the board. 15 yes, one no, Commissioner Scott, no vote. Thank you.
That's all I have for you tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Any other questions for Finance Director Herb?
Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Herb.
Thank you.
Next is 8A, Commissioner Fritz.
Yes, the conservation board was approached about the having a deer hunt on the property out on Blockhouse Valley. The information that are in front of you, they're talking about having three different type of deer hunts. One is a muzzleloader or archery hunt, youth deer hunt draw off on October the 27th and 28th. The other one is a muzzleloader or archery for veterans on November the 3rd and 4th. For the first, only five youth will be drawn, and on this and here, only four veterans will be drawn. So it's a, this is a very limited deer hunt, so it's not going to be a full-blown deer hunt. So, and I did talk to the mayor about it, even though she's not here. She said this was a full-blown deer hunt with a limited staff, she wouldn't be able to handle it out of her office since she's handling the drawing of the names and stuff. But since this is a very small, limited. But since this is a very small, limited thing that she's okay with it and her office can't handle it. And then the, the third one is a muzzleloader or archery hunt for legal Tennessee hunters, and four people will be drawn on it. And one person for November the 7th and 8th, one person for November the 15th and 16th, and one person for November the 24th and 25th, and one person for December the 8th and 9th. So this is what is being planned, and all the other details that you see is there in front of you. So I'll move for approval.
Have a motion to approve. Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any questions? I'll just add that, as Chuck has already said, the mayor brought this to the Conservation Board for their assistance because she had received several calls about having another hunt. And Commissioner Warfield had been on the Conservation Board and still is, and he worked well with the Conservation Board, which now Commissioner Fritz is the chairman of, and I appreciate your help, Commissioner Fritz, in getting this done. And I guess we just need a motion to forward this back to the mayor's office, or?
That's right.
Okay, so we've already had a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, the only thing is in Part B, it talks about muzzleloading archer veterans draw. That does apply to military veterans, is that correct? It's not veteran hunters?
Right.
Okay. Because that is, in fact, military veterans. It doesn't specifically say that, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Good point. Yes, sir. Good point. Would you like to have that added, military veterans?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would, I would prefer that that say muzzleloading for, that actually say military veterans, or veterans of the United States Military, or some wording to that effect.
Okay. Is that okay, Commissioner Fritz?
No problem.
All right. Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor of the motion to forward to the mayor as presented with the change in addition of military in front of veterans, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Is everybody okay? Do you need a break, or? Keep pushing, okay? Next is elections. Commissioner Fritz, you're back up again, sir.
Nomination committee met to go over the vacancies that were available. First one up was the Anderson County Beer Board. Commissioner Isbell moved to approve Sam Bryce and Kevin Rice to continue to serve on the beer board until 9/21, seconded by Commissioner White, and I so move.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the beer board nominations? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On the Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Mead moved to approve Ralph Daniels to continue serving as the alternate, expiring on 9/23, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg, and I so move.
Have a motion, have a second, by Commissioner Scott. Motion made by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then on the Civil Service Board, Chairman William R. Bill Riggs, his term expired, so he is the only applicant, and he was approved to serve until 9/21. And he was approved by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And since this was a election year and all new commissioners, and all commissioners were slated to fill new committees and everything, we went through the list of Anderson County Commission Committees, and reappointed all commissioners to all the different committees. I'm not going to go through every one of them. They're all in front of you on the list, so I'm just going to make a motion that we accept all the appointments that were slated here in front of you.
Have a motion to accept the list of committees and boards as presented by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner White. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, do you want to handle the election of a?
Sure, I mean, I can. Next item we have under elections is District One Constable. We had two applicants. This position was listed. No one had applied during the regular campaign, so we publicly announced and listed this opening for District One Constable. We had two applicants, Mr. Jennings Faust and Barry Bunch. Is Mr. Bunch here? Mr. Bunch and Mr. Faust. Both of them have turned in the necessary paperwork. We have that before us. I guess we just need to take a vote on who we would like to have as our District One Constable.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we put both applicants up for nomination.
Have a motion to place both applicants up for nomination.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jamison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two applicants. What's the proper process to do this? I want to make sure that we're being fair and equitable to everybody. Commissioner Fritz?
Let them, each one, maybe talk for a couple minutes.
Mr. Bunch, would you like to come up and speak first, sir? Mr. Bunch, if you could, just state your name and your address and anything you'd like to talk about yourself, sir. Thank you.
I'm Barry Bunch from Mountain Vista Road in Anderson County, Tennessee. I guess I put myself at a little disadvantage. I didn't get into this until late, so those that I actually know that are here, I haven't had an opportunity to reach out and talk to you about this. I am actually a full-time police officer with the Oak Ridge Police Department, so I graduated Anderson County High School. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. My current assignment is I do all of the community resource officer stuff, which is community outreach. I do the neighborhood wash, the Junior Police Academy, and the Citizens Police Academy. That was kind of what I had in mind with this position. Typically, we don't look at a constable's position as something that really serious, it's just an appointment or elected position, as some people don't even do anymore. So I wanted to take this as an opportunity, maybe to do more outreach into the community that I have served. I began my career at Anderson County in 1986. I did thirteen years here, so some of you may remember me from there. Worked in some other departments and currently thirteen years with Anderson County. Was a police advisor for the State Department, went to Yugoslavia in 2004 to assist that police force in training those officers. Also did the same thing in 2010 after the earthquake in Haiti. I went over there to take care of that, so I have collateral duties. My typical job is, is I do the community outreach stuff. Some of you may have seen the Junior Police Academy, Citizens Police Academy, things we've been doing for the last few years, but I am the senior firearms instructor for the department. And probably, one of the more important duties that I've done lately is I take care of all the active shooter training for the schools. This year alone, I've reached out, I've probably trained over a thousand teachers and staff in this last year, just in the beginning from the school going back to school, and I believe Oak Ridge went back in July. I also do that same training for the churches. I've done about eight different churches this, in the last, probably this last year. That's something that I do, and I typically do all the time. But in addition to that, I'm a SWAT instructor, I'm a firearms instructor, defensive tactics instructor, and a rifle instructor, so just here to, you know, if it's possible, to continue that outreach. I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know who I am and a little bit of my experience. Some of you do know me and know the outreach and the things that I do for Oak Ridge, so that's Oak Ridge.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Bunch. Any questions for Mr. Bunch? Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Jennings Faust, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As most of you know, I'm not a good politician. I did not get out and politic for this position. I'm kind of living on my record. I've been the constable in District One for the last sixteen years. I did not file this last term for election, and I've had several constituents fuss at me over it. I've given several excuses as to why I did not file. Bottom line was, it was a rough winter for me. I had just gotten over walking pneumonia, and the deadline got by me. But let me impress upon you my dedication to this position. As I said, the last sixteen years, I've served as the constable. In 1977, I began serving under the sheriff on the reserve, or at that time, it was called auxiliary, here in Anderson County. Between 1977 and 2002, I have held that position under each sheriff. And in 2002, I ran for constable the first time and won. I've been involved with constables across the state of Tennessee. Back in 2004, we established an organization called TCC with several other counties in this state, in order to try and implement discipline, training, and things that we felt like were not being taught to the various counties. I'm a charter member of that organization and the treasurer. Some of you may know that I retired from Anderson County after thirty years here. I've been coming to this building since 1967. I was over here when one of the deputies shot a round off in the elevator that goes up to the third floor. There's several stories like that around here, mostly are not told about, though. But one thing that was ironic to me, I did serve on the county commission. I've hit you guys. I hope you enjoy this, because it can be very time-consuming. If you're dedicated to it, it will take up a lot of time. But tonight, there were, the voices, the faces have changed up here. Some are still the same, some of us are a little bit older. But when the zoning issue came up, I found it so ironic, because in the early 90s, we addressed that issue. We implemented it. Now, perhaps, over the years, you know, that's gotten discarded. It's the same issue, where you notify every resident that's adjacent to the property owner. Plenty of time and nice postings, but that's a little bit off the, I was reminiscing a little bit back here. And it's been a while since I got up, but I would ask for your support. Mr. Bunch is highly qualified, no doubt about it, and I'm asking for your support based on my record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faust. Any questions for Mr. Faust? I think it'd be appropriate for us to take a paper ballot, ballot vote, Commissioner Fritz, I apologize.
Is there any nominations from the floor?
Well, I think we can ask that, but we took the two that applied, but I know by rules we're supposed to ask for any nominations from the floor. So are there any nominations from the floor for Constable District One? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Thank you for bringing that up. So let's do a paper ballot.
Does that record our motion to close nominations?
It probably does, yes. Would you like to make that motion?
So made.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mead to cease nominations. We have a second by Commissioner Denenberg. Any further discussions on ceasing the nominations? Hearing none, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'd like to do a paper ballot. No? So how would that work? We take one name, then vote yes or no, and then take another name?
One's yes, one's no.
So will that show up on the board?
Well, in years past, that's what Chuck said, yes would be Mr. Bunch, and no would be Mr. Bunch, is how we've done it for years.
I think it would too, and I also think that if we do it that way, I mean, it's just a piece of paper, that everybody has enough. Yeah, I think we can find enough paper up here to use. We can use the deer hunting piece that Chuck gave us. I just don't want to, I think when the process of voting, we'll see that maybe somebody's going to vote one way and it might influence other votes, and I don't want to do that. Mr. Chairman? Well, ma'am, since I'm married to you, I'll have. I'm gonna, I, I, I believe I'm gonna have to pass the gavel, just to be official. Please state your name, your address, and?
My name is Shannon Waddell. I'm married to Chairman Waddell, and he does not speak for me. I don't speak for him. I'm a little confused on the whole, I understand Jennings didn't turn his stuff in in time. Jennings has been out in Claxton with us for sixteen years. I don't understand the secret voting, but I'm not an elected official either, but I will just say this. I find it odd that out of nowhere, a new name appears for chair, for constable. Now, it sounds like Mr. Bunch is overly qualified and could probably do anything in any capacity of law enforcement. But Jennings Faust has served us well in Claxton. He is well-liked in Claxton. I have been with him to do with Claxton Volunteer Fire Department. He is very involved on the fire department level, former board member. And I don't feel that it should go without being said, that if there was a ballot right now on an election day, hands down, Jennings Faust would have been reelected. Now, what I would like for you to consider is Jennings is not a spring chicken. I think he knows that. Probably going to retire in a couple of years anyway. I just feel that it's not fair that you all now decide, does his career end tonight? Or does he have a couple more years? And if the citizens have his name on a ballot, or maybe he retires, then he's done. Do you see what I'm saying? I'd like for you to consider that. There's some Claxton people in that back corner over there. This man is loved in his community. He will work well with any sheriff, with any deputy, with any fire department, and he's smack dab in the middle of downtown Claxton where he lives. He doesn't miss much. Sometimes I call him, he's maybe missed something. But this is what he does, and he's retired from his other endeavors. I would just like for y'all to know that some of us citizens, and I'm not knocking Mr. Bunch, that resume sounds wonderful, but this one right here, when he says he's going to the House retiring, that's when I'll quit worrying about supporting him. But until then, my Claxton people, Jennings Faust. Thank you.
May I say something?
Mr. Sir, please come to the board, to the mic, and state your name and address, please. And you have three minutes.
Well, of all y'all who don't know me, I'm Eugene Chaney, and I live on Bryanforth Road. Me personally, I think that this should be decided by the two commissioners from that district. And the rest of your commissioners, no, y'all are not in that district, because I can't run from that district. And so I just feel like to personally, that only the two commissioners from that district should be the ones that decides this vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm sorry. Commissioner Mead, you have the floor.
Okay, first of all, I want to, I want to kind of answer a question that just came up, is that the state law specifically requires that these positions be filled by a vote of the full commission, so there's, there's no question about how that has to be done. Additionally, I believe that this is not, this also cannot be a secret ballot. We can't just hand in the names of the person we're voting for. We have to identify who we are on each one. The only reason it's done this way is that we don't know, and everybody, all the commissioners don't get to see how somebody votes in order to affect the way they might have voted. And it's more, it's more fair that, just like when we do the board, it doesn't show the votes until the very, till the last vote is done. And this is the same, this is really the same thing. Yeah, you have to sign each, we have to identify ourselves on each one.
So I'll just say that what we need to do at this point is take a piece of paper, write your name and who you support for Constable One. Any questions from anybody? I'd like to thank both candidates for applying and? I'd like to thank both candidates for applying, and I don't think we have a bad selection
Robert McCamey Faust. Rick Meredith Faust. Steve Mead Barry Bunch. Robert Jamerson Jennings Faust. Phil Yeager Faust. Commissioner Smallridge Faust. Tracy Waddell Faust. Jerry Creasy Faust. Denver Waddell Faust. Tim Isabel Faust. Josh Anderson Faust. Scott Vowel Faust. Or Shane Vowel, sorry about that, Scott. Catherine Denenberg Faust. Chuck Fritz Faust. Fifteen to one Faust.
Congratulations, Mr. Faust, for being elected Constable. Is there someone to swear their name?
Thank you, Mr. Bunch, for applying. You definitely asked that to the community, as your resume states. Thank you. Yeah, let's go. Yeah, if it's okay with the board, let's move on to the school board nomination, and we'll let Mr. Cole not swear both of them in at once if that's, if that's okay. All right, so let's move forward. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy, for taking over. Next on the agenda for elections is District Six School Board. The only applicant we had was Scott Gillon Waters. Do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Excuse me? Yes, ma'am. Are there any? Are there any?
This is a motion to nominate.
Yeah, a motion to nominate. Any other discussion on the nomination of Scott Gillon Waters? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any nominations from the floor for District Six School Board? Hearing none, we'll move forward.
Who can close nominations?
We have a, have a motion by Commissioner Mead to cease nominations. We have a second by Commissioner Denenberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I think we should just make it official. All in favor of nominating Mr. Scott Gillon Waters to District?
Electing.
Electing. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. District Six School Board Member Scott Gillon Waters, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gillon Water and Jennings Faust, please report to the main floor. And Mr. Cole, please do the swearing in. Commissioners, we'll take a recess after the swearing in. If you have to go now, feel free to help yourself, but we'll take a, we'll take a break after. For those of you that want to go, go ahead. Let me just say it that way. I'm not...
I state your name.
I, Scott Gillon Waters.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution and statutes of the United States and the State of Tennessee, and that as school board member of Anderson County, I will faithfully execute the office to which I've been appointed. By the authority vested in me as Anderson County Clerk in the State of Tennessee, I declare you board member of the Anderson County School Board. Congratulations.
Scott, we're expecting a five-minute speech, sir.
I state that I have been duly appointed to the office of Constable in the First District of Anderson County, Tennessee, to hereby solemnly swear that I will well and truthfully serve the state in the office of Constable. I will cause the peace of the state to be kept to the best of my power, that I will arrest all such persons as go in my side armed defensively, or who commit any riot or other breach of peace, or will use my best endeavor or complaint made to apprehend all felons, rioters, persons unlawfully assembled, and that if such persons flee or make resistance, I will pursue and make hue and cry accordingly to law, that I will faithfully and without delay execute and return all lawful process directed to me, and that I will well and truly, according to my power and ability, do and execute all other duties of my office. I so swear.
Would you like to take ten minutes recess? Ten-minute recess.
Did you see her apology on Terry by that thing?
Yeah.[1022.31]
We're going to reconvene the, uh, commission meeting, um, back to order. We left off, uh, commissioners, or I did, excuse me, uh, the, uh, industrial development board, uh, appointments. It's on page 115 in your package. Commissioner Scott, again, help me out. Thank you. Um, and I apologize, I skipped over that. Uh, so we have before us, um, the industrial development board of Anderson County appointments. Um, we have recommendations of Timothy L. Sharp, November twenty twenty-four, uh, Robert Baird for November of twenty twenty-four, and David L. Hopper through November of twenty twenty-four. Those are presented by Phil Cry, who's the, uh, attorney for the industrial development board. Have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next is the Health and Educational Facilities Board of, uh, Anderson County. And those nominations look to be, uh, let me make sure I got this right, for reappointment of the following current members of the board to a six-year term expiring on the dates indicated by each name. Leslie P. Sellers till November of twenty twenty, Joseph F. Rainey, November twenty twenty, Edward E. Coker, November twenty twenty, Charles E. Price, November twenty twenty-two, Louise B. Dunlap, uh, November twenty twenty-four, uh, Curtis C. Sexton, November twenty twenty-four, and Paul E. Bostic, uh, Junior, November twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Have a motion, Commissioner White?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, in addition, uh, they respectfully request the county commission appoint the following new members to fill vacancies created, uh, with the passing of two former members. Um, those nominations are William T. Galahad, November through November twenty twenty-two, and John E. Stare, uh, through November twenty twenty-two. We have a motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, we talked to Sheriff Barker out in the hall. He said he's covered everything already that he would like to talk about, so he, uh, would like for us to move on. We appreciate him being here tonight and his input. Uh, Director of Schools, sir, sorry for the long delay, and I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Chairman Lunde, and thank you, Commissioner. Uh, you know, I have to say one thing, uh, with the new commissioner, I do have, uh, a former teacher of mine, and I have a former student of mine, so you know, I don't know if that, what that tells me, I'm caught in the middle, right? But, but I congratulate all the new, and, and Josh especially, up on my end of the community, Josh in Denver. But, uh, just a few things, a couple of things, uh, we, uh, things that are going on, we do have the gym at Grand Oaks Elementary School. Uh, we've got that at the Archtech, and we hope to break ground and finish that, uh, sometime, uh, this year. It will be finished before this year, and, and we've been waiting on that for a long time, so we're excited about that. Uh, the other thing is, uh, ESG, as you know, about a few years back, ESG worked with us on a, on a, on a cost-neutral, uh, ten million dollar, uh, capital improvement loan, and we're working on that right now to see if there is any other savings out there, so we're going to meet with them on the twenty-fifth of this month to, they've got Archtech looking to see if there's some things that, uh, we've got some things out there that really need to be fixed, American conditioning units and things like that, so we're, we're hoping that will come through and, and see where that is. As, as you know, we're working on our capital out, our capital, uh, needs list for the next five years, and we'll be getting that to, uh, the budget committee here shortly. The other thing is, um, our attendance, uh, in the, in our, my report, it was at sixty-two-hundred, but, uh, we've got some block areas that the students are not in right now, so, uh, we're right at about sixty-two-twenty-four, and this time last year, we were about sixty-two-nineteen, so we're pretty close. Uh, one of the things, though, is we've had to add a new kindergarten teacher at Bryceville Elementary School this year. We've got, uh, twenty-eight students in kindergarten, and, and we really like that growth up there. Uh, we're up about ten students in Bryceville, in that community, so, so that's pretty neat that we're doing those things. And the last thing, uh, principal for a day, we've got that scheduled for the September the twenty-seventh. If I have some new commissioners that would like to be part of that principal for a day, if you will, uh, get a, uh, text me, or email me, or something, we'll see about getting, that's just a day where we let, uh, the leaders in the community go out, and they really and truly shadow the principal that morning, and then we come back together, and it's a time for them to just really see the inner workings of all of our schools. We're excited about what's going on in all of our schools. Um, and just to let you know-
What date was that?
That is September the twenty-seventh. And, uh, one of the things in my goal this year is to really, uh, communicate more with the students, and I'm starting my first lunch and learn. Uh, will be on this Thursday, September the twentieth. I will be meeting with a group of students from all the, all the middle schools and all the high schools, and then the Career and Technical Center and CRCS, and we kind of do three things. We ask them what's going well, what's, needs to be tweaked, and really what's off the rails. And so we will be working with that group. Anderson County High School is the first one, and I'll be doing one every month till we get through with that, so, uh, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Director of Schools? Commissioner White?
Talking about our football coaches.
We, uh, Anderson County won last week, and Clinton lost, or?
Period.
Period. I mean, what would you like me to answer?
Well, I didn't attend the school board meeting the other night, and I was just curious how the, uh, school board handled the altercation at the-
The, uh, the school board did not take that up. Uh, that was handled at the school level with, uh, consultation from me, uh, and I believe that, uh, we hold everybody in Anderson County to a high standard-
I agree.
And I believe that no matter what position you get called in, you have to be above it, and to me, there's no compromise on what's right and what's wrong. And that's pretty well the way I see it. Uh, I think that, uh, there was fault on both sides, and, uh, I think it was handled, uh, the best it could. I think that what they did was, uh, uh, it's a shame that it had to happen, but at the end of the day, I think that, uh, we had to do what we thought was best, and I'm hoping we can move on from this. We're all in the same community. As one person called me this week, uh, and, uh, said, uh, well, the first one said, you know, uh, Dr. Parrott, you'll never lose your, lose your job over a test score, it'll probably be about a football game, and I, I, I laugh, but now I don't know if that's true or not, you know, so. But, but I think at the other end, you know, the other, this lady called me, and she said, you know, at the end of the day, we are, our kids all play in the same community, we go to the same churches, we eat at the same restaurants, and we need to be, uh, we need to be above that, so.
I guess what my question, what I was going to, was, i- is the state satisfied with the action that-
Yes, yes, the, the state, the state-
That's what I wanted you to say.
Yes, yes, the state, the state is satisfied, T double S double A is satisfied with what the schools, the, the, what the schools put in place, and there is no further action with T double S double A. There was one student that got ejected, and he is, he is, uh, was out last week, and he's back in this week, the, uh-
Good, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Parrot? Dr. Parrot, I would just like to say, I think you did a great job handling that issue. As, as you know, in some cases, there's never a, a win, if you will, with that kind of thing, but I, I, I think I mentioned this, but I'd sure like to see that bridge name changed, instead of Battle of the Bridge, to the Bridge of Sportsmanship. Uh, that way, uh, maybe both sides will play towards sportsmanship, and to, instead of going into it with a mindset that, you know, we're out to, to, to get each other, and I, I think that'd be worth considering.
We are working on that. Uh, I talked to, uh, Mr. Deal, Assistant Director of Schools, there, and I said, I'd like to throw the Battle of the Bridge into, over that bridge out there, but then I said, well, then T double S, T, the T, T double R A would get on because I thought so, and then I'd have to deal with that here, so that, I, sometimes I say things without thinking, so.
Well, you know, there's been good things. I mean, I know we, sometimes we get, the, the bad things get blowed up, but I remember being in this room, and we recognized Anderson County High School, and it was a good feeling for everybody, people from Clinton, people from Oak Ridge, it didn't matter, and I'd like to see us get back to that, and I think there's good people on both sides of, of the bridge, and I think that's what we should focus on, and I think you do that, and I think the school board does that. I know Mr. Stone Cypher back there did that when he was in your capacity, and, uh, that's what I appreciate.
And, and our, and, and, and you're exactly right, it was a great game, and it, it was a tough-played ballgame on both sides, and the students and the fans and everybody did, it, it is, and I, and I think that, that, uh, as you know, we move on, we learn things, and we do a better job the next time.
And, uh, Commissioner Isible told me one time, uh, if, if we can't seem to straighten our ways, maybe it'd be, make sense for both coaches to hold hands and walk around the track for a while, and maybe they'll get to know each other in a positive way, and I thought that was an excellent idea.
I take that into consideration, right.
Thank you. Just, just, just one last question. Uh, I know I asked last time, uh, flu shots are in process.
Yes, flu shots are in process. We've got, uh, the letters will be going out to the parents here in just a couple of weeks to, to, to take care of that, and I want to really true, you know, that, you, you really think that is a community partnership, because we partner with the local pharmacies in the area, and, and they get that for us at a real discounted cost, and a lot, you know, there's no cost to our students, and so we're excited about that.
Thank you, and that's available to all students that-
Yes, all students.
And the parents just have to approve of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Director of Schools? Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, County Mayor. As we all know, County Mayor is not available tonight, and again, our hearts and prayers go out with the mayor. Uh, if it's all right with the board, I'll try to cover some of her report. I'm not sure I'll be able to take up everything, but I'm just going to read from the minutes I have in front of me, and I may be missing something because I'm not on my correct page again. Maybe Commissioner Scott can tell me what page I'm on again, uh, but I-
Page one thirty-nine.
Well, I was close, I'm on page one thirty-five, so I'm not too far away. Uh, still at the tail end. Uh, so, uh, County Mayor, Mayor Frank, she has some appointments to the boards and commission, uh, committees. Uh, the E nine-one-one board, she would like to, uh, re- reappoint Steve Payne, EMA Director, term expiring one-twenty-two. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second motion by Commissioner Meredith, second by Commissioner White. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for Steve Payne, EMA Director, term expiring one-twenty-two. Also, the appointment of Robert Sexton, Assistant Chief Deputy, term expiring one-twenty-one. Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for the appointment of Robert Sexton, Assistant Chief Deputy, term expiring one-twenty-two. Anderson County Regional Planning Commission, reappointment of Ned Ferguson, term expiring nine-twenty-two. Have a motion? Have a motion, Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for Ned Ferguson, uh, Anderson County Regional Planning Commission. Next is the appointment of Mr. Commissioner Tim Isible, term expiring one-twenty. Um, do I have a motion to, have a motion, Commissioner White, have a second by Commissioner Denenberg? Uh, any discussion? All in favor, stated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, for Commissioner Isible. Conservation Board, uh, appointment, this is, uh, again, a mayor appointment, uh, Conservation Board by Mayor Frank for the appointment of Josh Anderson, uh, term expiring twelve-twenty-one. Have a, I have a motion to, and of course, we've already passed this earlier, Commissioner Fritz's, I believe, didn't we?
Not in this edition, it's Mrs. Mayor.
Yes, correct. Yeah, uh, so we have a motion. Who made the motion? Commissioner White, who made the second? Uh, Commissioner Isible. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, uh, Commissioner Anderson to the Conservation Board. Um, there was a request, uh, to the chairman, uh, to assign a working committee to reevaluate the Ethics Committee and Code of Ethics. Uh, the mayor requested that. Um, she's given us some information. Um, I'd like to open it up to the board and, and understand what this board would like to, to do in, in relations to this request on behalf of the mayor, um, for the Ethics Committee. We have an active Ethics Committee in place. Um, a lot of things have changed since two thousand and six, when that took place. Um, I'm not familiar with all the laws and the requirements in the ethics side, and I know Jay has some knowledge on it, but, uh, what's the pleasure of this board on this request?
We defer for thirty days.
I think that's fair. Uh, we have a motion to defer, we have a second motion by, deferred by jury, Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any further discussion on that motion? Thank you. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. Um, information only, uh, in our packet, uh, provided, also, Annette sent this to us earlier as well, from the mayor, uh, this is the Board of Trustees meeting, uh, September eighteenth. Uh, that has been changed, if I'm not mistaken, to September twenty-fourth, I believe, four o'clock, four o'clock. Um, if you have any questions on that, it's at the Clinton Community Center. Again, Board of Trustees meeting September twenty-fourth at four o'clock at the Clubroom in the Clinton Community Center. That's information only. Any other items for the mayor that I might be forgetting? Okay, we'll move on. Law Director, uh, contract approvals, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to be with you and the members of County Commission tonight. Um, I refer you to our written report, Section A is the contract approvals. Any questions on those? Section B is zoning violations, a update on some cases we've handled this month. We did have six cases in court this morning, the county prevailed on all those cases. They're not listed here, they'll be listed in next month's report. Um, new lawsuit, I sent one to you-
Mr. Jaeger? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I didn't, didn't mean to interrupt you. I wanted to ask you a question on these zoning violations.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is any of those, and Commissioner Fritz, you may know, uh, any of these related to the, to the residents on, uh, what is that? Uh, Faust Carney, is it?
Six oh-two Faust Carney.
Yeah, is that the one that's being-
They're starting to tear down today.
Yeah, it's tearing it down today on the way-
They were in court this morning, they've gone ahead and, uh, got an attorney, they appeared in court, but-
Well, it's being torn down today.
Exactly. I've got pictures of that, and they agreed to do that some time ago, but they felt the need to get an attorney and file an answer, so a default judgment wouldn't be taken against them.
Well, I appreciate you-
I believe they're moving forward with it, and-
Yes.
As promised, the-
Yeah, half of it was down on the way here tonight.
That's all we're asking, is just compliance.
So I, I just want to say thank you to you and the zoning, the mayor, whoever else is involved, for helping us get these, uh, blighted homes taken care of. I know it's not an easy task, uh, we get that question a lot, and, uh, but I appreciate what's being done.
Well, thank you, it doesn't, it's not overnight result, and it takes a while on some of them, especially when we're asking to raise the structure.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, new lawsuit, I sent you the one on Catherine Houdashell last week. Um, we got a new one today, and that one be, I'll send it to you tomorrow. Uh, that's going to be on an accident involving a county vehicle. Uh, the other lawsuit is the, uh, against the Charter Commission, that's Martin Duvall and David Stanley, against the Anderson County Charter Commission. They have, uh, requested legal representation from myself. Back on their first meeting, they appointed me as their legal counsel, it's in the minutes. If you want to look back at the Charter Commission minutes, I am the legal counsel. I need to get approval from this body to represent them in a lawsuit via the private act that controls my job, so if you would like for me to represent the Charter Commission in this lawsuit, I need a positive vote, affirmative vote on that. If you would like to hire outside counsel, then, uh, we're going to have to go out and shop for an attorney and pay an outside attorney on it.
We have, uh, some motions, and if- We have some motions and if Commissioner Mead and Commissioner Isible will let me speak for a second. I just want to reiterate what you said, Jay Jaeger. You indicated that the Charter Commission asked for your legal representation at the first meeting in the minutes of the first charter meeting roughly.
Yes, sir.
So, so you were representing them at that time and, and they asked you to do so and that's in the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted to say that for clarification, not doubting you, sir, just wanted to restate that. We have a motion by Commissioner Mead. We have a second by Commissioner Isible. Commissioner Mead, would you like to state your motion, sir?
My motion is to approve the law director supporting the Charter Commission as legal counsel for the suit. I would also like to state that in that the Charter Commission is a fully uncompensated organization. Whether or not the Charter Commission stays in, in, it does well in the suit or not, does not affect any of us financially. And whether or not the Charter Commission continues into the future, because it's a totally unpaid position, it has no financial interest. So that the, therefore, the members that are the Charter Commission, like myself, that are on commission, should feel free to be able to vote on this, on this issue.
So that's your motion, Commissioner Isible. You second that motion?
I do second it. I'd like to add, there could be no additional calls.
From Jay Iswell.
No.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have, item D, is something that's totally up to you. If you want to override the mayor's veto with the Charter Commission extension that passed last month, that's up to you. What that would do, they need an extension to be able to meet, to resolve some of these issues that are lingering concerning this lawsuit. They certainly want to comply with the law and they want to do what's right within the legal parameters. Right now, we're in a situation where they can't meet without an extension resolution. Well, you passed that extension resolution last month, but it was vetoed by the mayor. So if this body wants to override it, we need a vote to override that veto. If not, then we'll stay in a quagmire, without the ability to adjust some of the issues with that are addressed in this lawsuit.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mead, a second by Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Mead, would you state your motion, sir?
My motion is to, is to challenge the, to override the veto of the mayor. And I'd like to explain a little bit of this. State law provides the Charter Commission is allowed nine months or any time extension approved by the county legislative body. It gives no specific time limits or specified in the law. An extension was approved at the last meeting, but was vetoed by the county mayor. Thus, the mayor, on her own, canceled any further lawful action by the Charter Commission. If this recently, the lawsuit was filed, the law director was talking about, that the Charter Commission basically was not complying with state law, is what they're saying in this.
Commissioner Mead, and I don't mean to cut you off, sir, I'd like to get the motion and get the second.
Motion is to override the veto.
Okay. And then we'll come back for discussion. Certainly, you can have a floor discussion.
And I reserve the right for the last word.
Sure, sure. No problem. I don't want you to feel like I'm cutting you off. I just would like to get the motion on the floor so we can have the discussion.
I was five seconds from being done.
You're fine. Sorry, I should have waited. Commissioner Mead has his motion. Commissioner Jaeger, do you second that motion as presented? Okay, open for discussion. Commissioner Mead, would you like to resume your five seconds?
No, I was going to, all I was going to finish with is that recently, they had this lawsuit filed, okay, saying that the Charter Commission was not complying with state law. And that's going, that's going to court and that will, that will be determined, okay? Now, any action they could have made is no longer possible unless this commission overrides this veto. Because without an override of this veto, the Charter Commission would have no legal authority to take any action or try to comply with the courts. So I highly encourage everyone to support this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Anderson, sir?
The, the extension that was vetoed, what was there a timeframe on that?
It says, till we comply with all court orders.
Oh, okay. So we're just waiting to see what?
Just, yes, sir.
What the lawsuit says. Okay, and to be clear that right now, we, the commission is not, the Charter Commission's not spent any money?
No, not to my knowledge. I know that at some point, we want to reimburse Jeff Cole for the stipend for the secretary. That's a small amount, very small amount. But other than that, the Charter Commission has not spent any money that I'm aware of. Well, that's, that stipend that we talked about, that's the only thing I can think of.
I, I have some information on that.
Okay, let's let Commissioner Anderson finish his thoughts.
Okay, I think I'm, I'm good now.
Okay. If, if you don't mind, Commissioner Mead, I'd like to just, I think we have put money into the Charter Commission. And I'm not here to debate what it was for or what, I mean, I voted against it, not because I don't believe in the Charter Commission members, because I just don't believe we should be throwing revenue at things that I think the form of government, and this is just my personal opinion, I'm not against the charter or what have you, I'm not, I just feel like that's something totally different than this body here. And I have trouble with it myself, trying to understand why we engage so much in that when we elected a Charter Commission to handle those activities, why we find ourselves always getting into the middle of it or having to fund it. And I know there's TCA codes that Commissioner Mead will be espousing here shortly, but I, I just want to say that my interpretation of this whole process was that I received, like all of these commissioners around this table, a very lengthy summary that, to me, indicated that the Charter Commission effort had been finalized and the results were presented. And it was an interpretation of my own that it was a done deal. I guess those on the other side that would like to make sure, you know, see the Charter Commission finish based on TCA codes and so forth, that, that, that it didn't get done properly. So I'm just looking for answers on how we help expedite the Charter Commission and making sure all the Ts and Is are dotted. And I just hate that we have to spend taxpayers' dollars to continue this effort when it was clear during the minutes of the Charter Commission that there was no interest in a form of charter government. Now, I know there's a certain amount that are interested in it and there is a certain amount of signatures obtained. But, you know, at the end of the day, if we need to put it on a vote and get it voted on, then that's what we need to do. And again, that will cost more money as well. So I'm going to just, that's my two cents. And, well, I just, I just would like to see us move forward in whatever capacity that is. I don't think anybody on the Charter Commission is doing anything illegal intentionally. I think they've all worked very hard, as has already been stated, as a non, they don't get paid for this. They're trying to serve the community and I appreciate all their efforts and I think they've done a great job from what I can tell. So Commissioner Mead, I'm sorry, I rambled too long and I took certainly more than five seconds, but I'll let you finish up.
I just, just a couple things. So I have some information. In the last year's budget, $5,000 was set aside for Charter Commission expenses. Of that $5,000, exactly $1,000 was spent. Okay? There is no money in this year's budget to fund the Charter Commission. And that's going to be required, because under state law, the county is required to provide $50,000 for the, for the operation of the Charter Commission. I don't believe it's going to take anywhere near that, okay? But, but last year, there was in fact $1,000 and that was, that was literally all to pay for the secretary, for Annette, for her support. And that was the, that's the only funding that was spent last year, was that $1,000. The other $4,000 went back into the general fund when we cleared the budget. But there will be, there needs to be a request in the near future to provide funding, although right now, to address this lawsuit with the law director not being any cost, it, I don't feel that it's, it's urgent, but it does need to be done sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Any other discussion on this issue? And if you don't mind, Kim or Annette, can you restate the motion that was made, just so we're all clear before we take our vote?
Just to override the veto on the resolution, to extend the Charter Commission.
Okay, so is everyone clear? We're going to be voting to override the veto of the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I know you said that Mr. Mead could have the last word, but I've got.
No, you're fine, sir.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask his commission to let the veto stand.
Thank you, sir.
The Charter Commission met. We, we interviewed every department head in this courthouse that would meet with us. We interviewed numerous people, asked them what they would like to see changed, how, how we'd go about changing it. We interviewed, I don't know how many people it was, but no one that we interviewed in this courthouse had any ambition whatsoever about changing our form of government. Now, we've met, I think, 12 times, 10, 12, 10 or 12 times. How many? We met 12 times and that was our obligation. We, in my opinion, we closed that meeting with, with no recommendations for change. Now, and, and Mr. Dr. Stanley and Duvall is going to file this lawsuit, which is their, their privilege. Mr. Jaeger is going to be our representation, our lawyer. If we let the mayor's veto stand to where that we can't vote, I mean, where we can't meet, which I don't think any of us want to meet anyway, I think we ought to let the mayor's veto stand and then if it goes to court, surely to the world, our law director can, can relay to the court. The Charter Commission can't meet because the mayor vetoed our extension. So I know I'm not speaking as elegant as Steve does, but we don't need to meet anymore, in my opinion. We, we've met, we've done our obligation. We've talked to people, we've done everything that we were, were required or asked to do. And to continue this, I see no need. I, I don't see any reason in the world why we ought to extend this Charter Commission any further. If it goes to court, let, let the lawyers handle it. That's what, that's what lawyers do. But the Charter Commission, we have no, we have nowhere to go. We have, we don't recommend any changes, we don't want any changes. And I think if we met three or four more times, I think it'd still be no more changes. So I disagree with Steve on the, on, I would just ask you to let the, let the mayor's veto stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner White. Commissioner Isible?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Chairman Stonecifer is, is here with us tonight. I don't know if he'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman, and get, get his opinion. If that's okay.
Oh, absolutely. I think it's great.
Yes. And he was a good chairman.
He's a good man all the way around.
Well, all right.
And he's a Duvall fan. I like that, too. Commissioner Stones, Mr. Stonecifer, will you state what your capacity is and your name, sir?
V L. Stonecifer, and I'm the Chair of the Charter Commission.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You know, I, I can echo what Commissioner Mead and Commissioner White both have said. But when running for the Charter Commission, I thought, you know, one goal, hopefully, you know, I've seen over the past few years enough lawsuits in Anderson County and I'm sick of hearing about them. And if we need the extension, we need to deal with the situation and do our due diligence to avoid lawsuit. I'll leave it at that.
So you would like to see us override and perhaps give the extension of time?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, V L. Commissioner Mead?
Is this the last word?
Does anybody else have anything to want to add before Commissioner Mead gets the last word? Commissioner Jamison, yes, sir?
I want the motion repeated. What is the motion?
Yes, sir.
Override the veto on the extension to the Charter Commission that was vetoed by Mayor Frank.
So basically, an override of the mayor's veto regarding the Charter Commission. Any other questions before we turn it over to Mr. Mead for final word? I see you looking over there, Commissioner Fritz. No comments? Okay. Commissioner Mead?
Okay. I agree with literally everything Commissioner White had to say, okay, with one exception. I agree that we had 12 well-publicized televised meetings that not a single person, not a single person wanting a change to a charter form of government appeared. Not one, okay? And so I felt like we were done, but we've now been challenged in court. There are people that don't think that we're done, okay? There are people that think we didn't comply with the law. I think we are in compliance with the law, but that's now up to debate and it's going to be decided by the courts. If we leave the veto in place, what that will mean is now this commission decided to terminate the Charter Commission and give it no authority to act on anything, including responding to the courts. That would be a dire mistake. The mayor vetoed this, tried to cause an issue, okay? That's what vetoes do. But I don't want this commission to be in the paper that this commission is the one that canceled the authority of the Charter Commission before they can respond to the court. That's what voting against this would be. And now I think we can go to a vote.
Very good. Any other discussions? I think that ends it there. Commissioner Mead summarized very well. Jay, do you have anything to add? Okay. So let's go to the board and vote. Does everybody understand the motion?
Mr. Chairman. One question, law director. If the extension is not granted and the courts rule against the Charter Commission, does that automatically put the Charter Commission back together to do whatever the courts tell them they have to do?
Good question.
It depends on the structure and the language of court order. I would say, yes, that they'd be required to do something if the other side prevails. And it's more than likely to write a charter and put that charter on the ballot. That would be via court order. That would not be an extension. What I think the people that are proponents of the extension is want to handle this situation now. They want to go ahead and try to address the situation and not draw it out through extensive litigation. The other way, we're going to have to wait and see what the court says and see what a court order, the language of a court order would be.
So if we let the veto stand, as Commissioner White has said, and the courts rule in favor of the plan of, then that would give the extension, that the court order would give the extension. If.
Possibly, again, it depends on the structure and the language of the court order.
If they fail, then it would be an end of the Charter Commission and everything would be over, right?
Possibly. I can't make that definitive statement, not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Robert. I just can't say yea or nay.
Let me ask one more question.
Commissioner White?
To Mr. Jaeger?
Yes, sir.
Let's say that we override the mayor's veto. Let's say that Chairman Stonecifer calls another meeting.
Yes, sir.
What will we do?
We'll look at options to cure any deficiency that we believe and, and we'll follow along with the court action to see which way it's headed and try to comply with any court orders. I don't know what would happen at a meeting. I don't know what motions we made and I don't know what motions would be passed. But it would open up the opportunity to have a public meeting and for the Charter Commission members to make motions and see what passes and what doesn't.
To open up our meetings? We never had a unpublished.
No, I know, but it opens up the ability to have a meeting. Right now, we're at a stoppage. We cannot have a meeting without an extension. We cannot have a meeting without an extension. The only other option is, without this passing, is to wait until a court order is laid down. And again, there's so much uncertainty of the language of court order.
I think it's a...
I agree with your, everyone's position on this, believe me. I know what you went through. I know the 48 different departments you interviewed. I know the opportunities each time that the commissioner, the commission and Chairman V.L. Stonecifer made every night. It's open mic time. Anybody that wants to speak, for or against? Again, not a single person.
And now that it's over, now that it's over, we're going to do it again. It's...
It's frustrating.
I wish we had Ms. Wondell back over here. She can address this.
Come on, Commissioner White. Why do you think I come to these meetings? I mean that in a positive way, honey, if you're listening. Okay, no, seriously, let's get back on task at hand.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I think it's healthy discussion. Look, I think anybody that's involved with this, whether you're for charter government, against charter government, or indifferent to charter government, I think everybody wants to see us get through this in whatever capacity it is. And, you know, I'm no expert on it. I think the form of government we have works very well. I think term limits are every election period, and it's not my fault if the constituents, which I represent, or Commissioner Fritz represent, likes to have us in here each time. They have the opportunity to vote us out every time, and they are entitled to that, and they deserve that right to vote us out if we're not doing our jobs, and I respect that. So I just think the charter of government, again, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it, and I'm not here to take action on it. I'm going to make my decision based on what I believe is right, and I'm not going to sit here and influence all the other commissioners. You have to make your own decision. We've heard from the chairman of the Charter Commission, we've heard from members of the Charter Commission, we've heard from our law director, so we have a vote to make. I'm going to let this be the last time that Commissioner Mead is to speak, and this will be official this time. We had a very expedition meeting, and now we are getting into a long discussion. So let's finish this up, Commissioner Mead, and let's go to vote after that.
Very briefly, I would like to think this was over, but it's not over because we have a lawsuit. Approving this motion simply allows the Charter Commission to respond to the courts. Otherwise, they will have no authority to respond to the courts. Additionally, if we, when this goes to court, the court could decide that because we no longer have a functioning Charter Commission, that there will be a new election, and we will elect a new Charter Commission. And we'll go through the whole process again in the next county general election. I think it's, I think it's time to address this, take care of the problems. We need to have a Charter Commission that still can function, okay, to respond to what the court has to say. I highly recommend that you vote for this motion.
Our opponents won't be satisfied until they win.
Let's go to vote. Everybody understand the motion?
Only requires a simple majority, by the way.
Yes is to override, no is to allow the veto to stand as presented. Motion carries to override veto.
Okay, back to my written report. Item E is the Toyota versus Anderson County case. As you know, we prevailed on that case in court. They've appealed to the Court of Appeals, and they've now sent us another settlement offer. Initially requested an executive session to go over that settlement offer with you. Mr. Alley is not in town, and I don't feel like it's proper to go ahead and present this without his take on it, without him telling you his thoughts on it. So I'll go ahead and write the brief for the Court of Appeals, and we'll take this settlement offer up in October when Mr. Alley can be here and fully brief you on his opinion. But instead, we'll just take that off. There's no action required on item E tonight.
Thank you.
Any questions on that issue? Okay, I'll send you via email the settlement documents, and I'll remind you, they are confidential, okay? They have to. There's a rule of evidence that says they are confidential. They're not to be shared with anyone, okay? So I'll put that again on the heading of the email, but please comply. Thank you. General Sessions, Division Two update. You may have heard some discussion where I'm holding up payment on that. That is true. They are going to complete that punch list. That punch list was started back the week that we opened it, in April. There's some items that were not addressed. We had another walkthrough. Again, we took the New Circuit Court Clerk and Roger Lloyd, the Building and Grounds Director, they pointed out some issues, they have fixed some. We got an email today where they think they're ready for another inspection. But as of today, I've not written or authorized the writing of the last check, and I will not until that entire punch list is completed to our satisfaction. I hope you understand that. We've had this before, and we can't get them back out here once you pay them. So we'll be glad to pay just as soon as they fix all the issues. And I'm hopeful that this email that I received today that is correct and everything is going to be finalized.
Jay, how many items roughly are left?
About six.
About six? Stuff that could happen pretty quick, assuming nothing major or anything like that?
Nothing major. No additional.
Any other questions for Jay on this issue regarding General Sessions, Division Two, Court?
That's all I have for you. I just wanted to make sure we did approve the Dillis-Freeman and Johnny Freeman. Do we have that on the consent agenda?
I think it was on the consent agenda.
I just want to make sure we get approval, official approval on that.
Yeah, it's on the consent agenda, Jay, under courtesy resolution.
The last item I have for you is tomorrow night at 5:00 at the Anderson County Water Authority. They've invited us all to take up the Brooks Gap Pumping Station. As you may recall, you asked me to write a letter to them expressing our concerns about what happened at Brooks Gap. I've spoken with Larry Clowers, I've spoken with a board member, and they feel certain that they are ready to satisfy the county commission and all the neighbors in that area with their plan, and they're anxious to present that to us. So if you're free tomorrow night at 5:00, does everybody know where the water authority meets, on Charles Seaver's Boulevard here, just north of town? Please try to attend that at 5:00 if you're available. If not, let me know on Wednesday morning, and I'll give you a brief update on that via email. Any questions or anything I can do for you while I'm standing here? Thank you for your time tonight.
Commissioner McCamey?
Yes, sir.
Did you notify the people like Roger Robinson about this meeting?
I have one person that contacted me. I didn't have all their contact information, but...
I've seen a lot of emails going back and forth, and the community in that area is, I think, up to speed on all the improvements that have been made. It looks like they're coming to some type of resolution on all of the different issues. So the communication is really going well. I know Commissioner Fritz is...
I can tell you, the Water Authority Board is not taking this lightly. They are trying to fix this problem, they're very concerned about it. And I've talked to them, and I believe they're going to put a fix in place.
Thank you for your help. I know the community appreciates it.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Okay, next is the Operations Committee. I guess I'm supposed to do this since I was the chairman when it came to order, so I'll just read it real quickly and turn it over to Isabel. Operations Committee met on September 10th. All members were present. The only action item we have was to nominate a new chairman. Commissioner Isobel was nominated along with Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Isobel was nominated by a show of hands with five votes. Commissioner Jaeger received three. So Commissioner Isobel was elected, and he is now the chairman of the Operations Committee. I don't think that requires a motion or anything, but Commissioner Isobel, would you like to say anything else in that regard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no action items.
Yep, thank you, sir. Appreciate you doing that, and I appreciate Commissioner Jaeger being willing to serve in that capacity as well. Operations does a great job. Next thing, ADA Committee Report requested by Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Creasy?
Excuse me, we met this past Monday, and we met with the engineering firm that's doing the evaluations and assessments for the ADA Committee of all of our buildings and the ones that'll be doing the reports to the State Department of Transportation. They gave us an estimate to finish out this year and an estimate of what it's going to cost next year to wind this all down and be complete. The total cost for both years is going to be $41,800. To finish out this year, I'd like your permission to go before the Budget Committee, Louise and I, to request another $5,000 to finish out this year and to be on the, work with the Budget Committee for next year's budget for a total of $21,800 to finish the work for the next year and to finish up the reports and what's been required by the Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Do we have a motion?
Sub move.
Have a motion, Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any further discussion about the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any additional information, Commissioner Creasy?
No, that's it. Thank you for your support, and that will finish us up.
Thank you for what you and the committee do. It's important for the county. Old business? No old business, any new business?
Just briefly.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Scott?
The Peace Pavilion dedication in the city of Oak Ridge and the first ringing of the International Friendship Bell will take place on Thursday, September 20th, at 6:30 p.m. The dedication will take place at the new Peace Pavilion and bell site in the center of A.K. Bissell Park in Oak Ridge. The public and all commissioners, obviously, are welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any additional new items to discuss? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion to second? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you all.
You did a good job, Creasy.
That's a very good job.